Good evening, and welcome to the City Council's special meeting of Monday, January 14. We are meeting to hear presentations from applicants to the city's open council vacancy. This process, the way it's going to work this evening, is that we're going to hear from the five applicants, then we are going to adjourn into executive session. We're going to discuss qualifications, and then we may come back, well, we will come back, but we may take action. If we don't take action, all five applicants will be moving forward to the next step. If we choose to move forward with a smaller set, we will affirmationally vote on the applicants that want to have moved forward. The next step is a meeting greet at 6:00 PM on January 22 in the Eagle Room, so for the applicants, and then followed by a Q&amp;A session with the applicants at the full council meeting on February 4, at which point the council intends to make a decision as to how to fill the vacancy. So, I'll just give a quick word before we start. We have five really strong enthusiastic applicants today. Thank you so much for applying. We are, in the end, only going to want, only able to pick one, so there will be four strong and enthusiastic candidates who will not get picked, but I just want to say sort of something similar to what I said last time, which is if you look at the elected officials in this city as of mid-last year, there were eight of us, and of the eight, six had gone through the process that you're going through right now, and of those six, only two got picked the first time. So this is, hopefully, for the four who don't get picked, this is just one step and one chapter in the evolution of your engagement with the city. So with that, we'll get started.
Thank you.
We, there is a timer at the, at the front. We'll, excuse me. Here presentations in the order that are displayed on the screen that were randomly drawn last week. There's a 10-minute clock, and as we progress through, you'll see a yellow light as we get closer to the end, and then I'll do a 30-second remaining remark, so you're aware of your time. Mary Harris.
Thank you, Clerk Yeggers. Okay, I want to make sure everyone can hear me. Thank you, and good evening, Council President Martz, ladies and gentlemen of the esteemed Issaquah City Council, and to the members of our community, both here with us tonight and watching live from home. My name is Mary Harris, and I reside at 2324 29th Avenue Northeast. It is with great honor and gratitude that I'm here tonight to share with you the reasons I am the right candidate to serve as the newest member of the council. As the daughter of a military man, and being a young professional chasing a big career in advertising myself, I've had the privilege of living in many cities across our great nation, both large and small. It wasn't until I landed in Issaquah a little over a year ago with my husband and two young children that I truly felt that I had found my home. I immediately felt a sense of community and recognized a calling deep within myself to contribute to this city in meaningful ways. Right away, I became actively engaged with the community in several ways. First, I'm very proud to say that I was appointed by our mayor to serve as a regular member of the Sister Cities Commission back in May of 2018, and since that time have been able to offer my marketing and public relations expertise to the commission. I've also represented Issaquah at the Washington State Sister Cities Convention in Olympia, and I've participated in the planning and execution of our annual presence at our city's biggest festival, Salmon Days. Next, as my own children approached school age, I began a search for like-minded mothers just like me devoted to keeping them safe while they're in school. Before I knew it, I found myself involved with a national organization with a growing Issaquah presence and started giving my time there as well. This affiliation gave me the unique opportunity to talk with hundreds of our residents over the course of five Issaquah Farmer's Market Saturdays this past summer, further deepening my love and commitment to everything this amazing town has to offer. The best interest of Issaquah has been at the forefront of my mind since I became a resident a little over one year ago. That's why I also willingly gave many weekends to this, this past year's election cycles, both for the midterms and for the November general election, advocating on behalf of the terrific candidates running from this district to represent us at both the federal and legislative levels. I made calls, walked door-to-door, and canvassed on behalf of some of Issaquah's best and brightest, with the victory of one of those candidates being the very reason I stand before you tonight. The application for this vacant council position asked questions about what we would contribute if selected, what we want to accomplish, and what we consider to be our biggest challenges and opportunities. We heard responses detailing transportation and traffic needs, safety, affordable housing, intentional growth and development, and maintaining our unique charm, all of which are very important, and they align beautifully with our city's strategic plan. Now, it is the job of the council to decide how we accomplish what we've set forth and to make sure that we have the right people on the council to get it done. By leveraging my professional experience as a marketer, I will contribute to the council and move the strategic plan forward in the following two ways. Number one, build trust. We heard in the strategic planning process that our citizens want more regular communication and engagement with us. The 17 years I've spent in marketing and PR gives me a competitive edge because I know exactly how to get our message to the right people at the right time and in the right place. I have my finger on the pulse of social media and other digital emerging channels. We need to optimize the tools that we already have, like the weekly Issaquah Insider newsletter, to give ongoing status updates and a progress report on the implementation of the strategic plan without requiring someone to seek out and read through the council meeting minutes. Let's take the proactive approach. Let's come to where our citizens are. We could host quarterly town meetings in places that are convenient and accessible to anyone who might want to come, from Sycamore up to Providence Point and Talis all the way over to the Highlands. We'll come to you, and we'll start to build more relationships, which will help us understand more deeply the perspectives of people that we live with in this community, further building that trust that we all want. Number two, build a brand. We know that having a deliberate character and unique identity is a common goal of our community members. We've organically done an excellent job of creating that charm that people use when they describe Issaquah today. But what's our next step? How do we build upon what we have and proliferate it for the future? When we talk about a brand in the context of a place like Issaquah, we're talking about so much more than a name or a logo. We're talking about the collective impact or lasting impression from all that is seen, heard, and experienced by visitors. In creating a brand, you have to actively manage the experience that we want people to have when they are here, visitors and residents alike, and continue to build upon it and evolve it appropriately over time. My experience on some of the world's biggest brands, most well-known, helps me, or well positions me to help lead this effort on behalf of the council. As a city, we must formalize our brand and to start purposely projecting it outward to the local community, the region, the nation, and even around the globe. We must engage our community members to help us define what we want our brand to be and then to build it together. In closing, public service has always been something I've aspired to, and because I truly love this city, my home, I'm invested for the long term and committed to making a positive impact to the future of our community and for everyone in it. My husband and I will raise our two children here, and it's a very exciting prospect to be able to have the opportunity and serve the city in an official capacity. Thank you for your time and for your consideration. Good night.
Councilmember, fellow applicants, and fellow Issaquarianians, both here and at home. Good evening. My name is Katie Hurt, and I currently reside at 46th Avenue Northeast in Issaquah. Thank you for allowing me the time to address you this evening regarding my application for the vacancy on city council. Why do I want to run for city council? The shortened answer is that Issaquah is my hometown, and I loved growing up here, and now it will be my daughter's hometown, who's right over there, and I want to proactively take steps to make sure that this is a place that she is proud to call home as much as I am proud to call this home. I grew up in Issaquah, and I originally moved here in 1994. I graduated from Issaquah High School in 2006, and I then moved to Seattle where I lived for approximately 10 years. During that time, I attended the University of Washington where I graduated with honors and a degree in economics and political science. I then went to Seattle University School of Law where I earned a JD with honors as well. Since graduating from law school, I have been a practicing attorney in Washington State since 2013, and my practice focuses on assisting individuals and families affected by disabilities with their legal needs, including guardianship, estate planning, affordable housing, and state and federal benefits. I recently moved back to Issaquah in 2017 with my husband, and our family grew this, well, this past year on Salmon Day Saturday with the birth of our daughter Claire. In the past, I have been happy to live in a community while mostly letting other people take on the role of making community decisions in local government. My role has, in the past, has been influencing my community through sitting on boards of different nonprofits in the area, including the Ark of Washington, the Ark of King County, Ski Hawk Special Olympic Ski Team up at Snoqualmie, and the Elder Law Section of the Executive Board for the Washington State Bar Association Legislative Branch. Now that I have moved back to my hometown, and I have a daughter who will be growing up in this community, I want to take a more active role in understanding the issues that face our town and take part in making decisions that will affect this wonderful place all of us call home. When looking at where council is going and what it is doing currently, I was advised to look at the draft, huh, the draft strategic plan. Having taken part in extensive strategic planning sessions for different boards I have sat on, I know how much heart and soul goes into these plans. A good strategic plan is a manifestation of leadership at work. It not only reflects where the organization wants to go, but also where it is, what it values, how they are going to get there, and what success looks like, like an all encapsulate, all encapsulated in one document that's easy to read and understand. No problem. From the draft strategic plan, it looks like Issaquah is well on its way to having that document in place. When reading a strategic plan, the draft vision statement really resonated with me. For those of you in the audience and at home who have not read the draft vision, it reads as follows. "Issaquah thrives as a welcoming community, creating a sustainable legacy for future generations that honors its rich history and passion for the natural environment." This truly spoke to me as somebody who has lived here previously and has decided to return. When looking at the endorsed goals and objectives underneath that vision, the areas of growth and development and social and economic vitality are the objectives that spoke most strongly to me. This is not to say that the other areas are not important, just that these are the areas I believe that I can bring the most to and that I would want to focus on during the short term that this vacancy fills. In the areas of growth and development, specifically, I looked at objective one, which is neighborhoods retain their charm and have a distinctive character, pattern, and setting which includes both built and natural environments. I know that the Issaquah I grew up in, in the 1990s, is not going to be the Issaquah that Claire grows up in, in the years to come. But I believe with purposeful planning such as providing support to small and local businesses and mindfully planning for walkability for everyone in our community, that Issaquah can retain its small-town charm while still being a welcoming place to its new neighbors. In the areas of social and economic vitality, I specifically looked at objectives two, three, and four. And, and one, I'm sorry. Objective one reads, "There's an increase in the, there's an increase in the local living wage jobs from a diverse mix of businesses." This objective interests me greatly. I believe that people who work here should be able to live here and vice versa. When I was in school, I remember coming to the realization that almost none of my teachers lived in Issaquah, and it wasn't because they didn't want to live here, it was because they simply couldn't afford to live here. This is still an issue that our town struggles with, and I would like to learn more about this issue and what the city council could do to address this issue. Objective two, "Housing affordability better meets the needs of individuals and families across the income spectrum to live and work in the community." As an attorney working with many individuals in the disabled community and in populations that oftentimes can't afford to go out and just buy a house or buy a condo, I have worked with families in navigating the housing and urban, urban development system and have seen firsthand the strengths and weaknesses of that system. I have also experienced firsthand being a young couple looking at Redfin every day, trying to find something that fits within our budget. I am friends with many young mothers in the area who struggle also to see how they will be able to keep their families in this community if rents continue to increase, and how difficult it is to save up for a down payment when you're also paying high rent. Objective three, "Access to services and resources is improved to reduce inequities in health and well-being in the community." I have worked with a number of our residents in a professional manner in navigating the state and federal benefits programs, and I am very interested in seeing what our city can do to fill some of the gaps that these existing programs leave. And finally, objective four, "There is an increase in new and existing businesses that choose to locate or expand in Issaquah." This is very exciting to me. Part of what makes a town with a large population still feel like a small town is being able to walk to a local business and be able to talk to the priority by, proprietor, by name, and ask them how their mom's doing, how their husband's doing, how their dog is doing. I would like to work with existing local businesses to see what has been helpful. Why did they choose to come to Issaquah? It's blinking, oh, sorry. "I am a new mother, young professional, woman, wife, daughter, lawyer, and friend. I do not purport that I am the voice of all young mothers or young professionals in Issaquah, but I do know many of them, and I want to bring their stories to help provide additional context to the story of our city that helps make the decision, that helps make the decisions that shape our town. I am an avid reader, and I'm excited to learn more about the challenges and opportunities facing our city, the different perspectives on those issues, and to help take part in making decisions on those issues moving forward." My name is Katie Hurt, and I'm excited to get more involved. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Got to get my technology. Hello, everybody. I know many of you know me, but let me give my introduction. My name is Lindsey Walsh, and I'm running for city council because I love this community and I want to work with you all to help lead us into the future. So I'm a small business owner, a mother of two, a 10-year resident of Issaquah. I graduated from USC with a degree in public policy, planning, and development with the intention of working for a city much like this, but instead, I spent the last 15 years as a small business owner building up a successful marketing agency. 10 years ago, my husband and I moved to Issaquah from Los Angeles looking for a really great place to raise our family. We could have moved anywhere because both of us at the time worked from home, and we chose Issaquah for the beautiful green spaces, the great schools, the wonderful diversity, and the safe neighborhoods. For the last two years, it's been a privilege to serve our city on the Planning Policy Commission as we've addressed everything from the affordable housing, to parking, to compact schools, and much, much more. Both my time on the Planning Policy Commission and my business background come together in my desire to serve the city. In building my business, I learned early on that I couldn't do it all, and I had to prioritize both my time and my clients' budgets in order to make smart decisions. I also knew that if I couldn't produce results quickly, I wasn't going to be hired, and we weren't going to be able to continue doing the good job that we were able to do. So I made sure that every dollar spent was measured and delivered results. Getting those results often required testing out a theory and seeing if it worked, and so every decision went back to that data, reinvesting when things did work out, and ruthlessly cutting them if they didn't. So I want to bring that same iterative approach and the database decision-making to the city. We saw this work really well with the Old Town Traffic Calming Project, as well as the version up in the Highlands. In those situations, we listened to the residents, we tried out a quick and cheap solution, we measured the effectiveness, and we're now implementing final versions. I'd like to take this idea further to work on congestion throughout the city, as well as other issues that we face. Traffic and congestion in the city is a tough problem. You all know that. While it will take state funding, the improvements to the Highway 18, as well as working together with other cities for large-scale changes, that doesn't mean that we should wait until that happens. We can make incremental changes now that create real results for our community by taking action in key areas, measuring the impact, and then using that to fuel our next change. One way we could do that is by placing temporary protected bike lanes on the specific streets that the Park Strategic Plan designated as a part of the Green Necklace. Let's see if this increases bike ridership on those paths, measure the results before committing to a final version. For the old town parking, we just recently got some great data there. Based on that, we could add signage to direct visitors to existing parking that's typically open and test out that idea before considering parking enforcement. Since we have the before data on parking utilization, we can measure the difference with signage. I really want to use this data-oriented decision-making approach right from the start of the process. I would encourage the use of more metrics and database dashboards to guide our decision-making. We recently added, well, recently, about two years ago, added a dashboard to track affordable housing creation for the central Issaquah, but now that we've adopted the inclusionary zoning for the rest of the city, we should be measuring affordable city, affordable housing creation throughout the city as well. While not all city programs can be taken down to the data and measured, directly measured or evaluated, we should make every attempt to keep those metrics in mind, whether it be public benefit, dollars spent, projects approved, or timelines met. I would encourage each of the council subcommittees to develop a set of metrics that can be collected and shared with the council members quarterly or annually. This will help us evaluate success on a particular project or initiative so that we can see if adjustments need to be made midstream. Another area I'm passionate about is getting our city ready for the future. We know that sound transit is coming, while it may be way off, but we need to have a community conversation about where that station should be located. We can't depend on sound transit to propose a site that's good for the city of Issaquah, nor can we wait for the conversation so that we can ensure the type of development around that station that we're looking for. We know that many of the areas proposed as possible station sites are ripe for redevelopment. If we don't have that conversation now, and thus zone those areas differently, we could miss out an opportunity for a site or to surround the station with the higher-density mixed-use housing that we're looking for. I also feel that it's important that growth should pay for growth. I remember in 2016 when the Issaquah School District proposed their impact fees with a 30% discount on top of the 50% reduction required by the state. I pushed back then, questioning whether that was the right decision for the city, and I was really glad to see the council make those changes recently to recognize that schools and their impact fees are important in development. I've seen the city grow dramatically since I moved here in 2009. We moved from Los Angeles, and I certainly don't want to see that level of sprawl or congestion happen here. I care both about the quality of life for our current residents and protecting our green spaces from growth. We have to have a complete plan for growth, schools, water, traffic, fire, police, and all of that, before the growth happens, and we need to make sure that each of those additions pay for the necessary infrastructure. I'm really looking forward to the concurrency plan review in 2019 to get a true understanding of the costs for the city and how we divide those fees up when development is proposed. It's also important that the city works with the school district on acquiring land and the school development policies, so I look forward to that conversation on what Issaquah residents want with the upcoming school construction. I really hope that they participate with the ongoing conversation about compact and urban schools. It's not going to be just a council decision, we need the residents to get involved. I'll finish by saying that over the last year and a half, I've watched or attended every city council meeting to stay informed and to help me understand the challenges facing the city of Issaquah as it related to my role on the Planning Policy Commission. Due to all of that preparation, I won't need to be brought up to speed on the current activities or issues that the city council faces in 2019. So I look forward to being able to jump into the work, and I welcome any questions you may have for me over the next few weeks or during our speed-dating interviews next week. Thank you.
I am Rachel Cox, and I reside at 2478 Northeast Julep Street up in the Highlands, and I have been a resident of Issaquah for about the last six years. I have lived in greater King County for my entire life. Many neighborhoods or cities I've lived in have been around Issaquah before I moved here, and no places felt like home until we came here. I raised my family here, I have a small business here, and I live and work here. My background is varied. Upon moving to the east side, I was a volunteer firefighter and then an EMT for three years in the greater Seattle area. In 2010, I started working as an ER technician for Swedish in Issaquah. I currently work as an administrative assistant to the Director of Transportation for the Issaquah School District. Daily, I interact with the public and parents of our great city. I have been a past leadership member in the Swedish community for the Medical Center and a union delegate. I am currently an instructor with the American Heart Association, and I honor and cherish the role that I get to play in that. Issaquah is a wonderful community, and I applied for the vacant city council position to participate in my local government. I understand the time commitment a position like this entails, and I am prepared to fulfill that and be a productive member of the council and to contribute in a positive and thoughtful way to the growth of our city. I believe everyone brings something different to the table, and I bring a background in safety and disaster training, as well as my love and commitment to this town. It is important to preserve and protect the quality of the character of Issaquah to me. I believe thoughtfulness and growth and location and development is an important part of this, to look at the city as a whole, as well as an area within it, and how any change or growth will affect Issaquah and its residents. I would like the opportunity to serve on the Services and Safety Committee. With my emergency medical and FEMA training, I believe I can contribute to this group in a unique way. I would also like to serve on the Infrastructure Committee, as I believe I have an awareness from my job and as a community member in the Highlands on how growth affects the neighborhoods and then Issaquah as a whole. Being a voice for community members is a big part of why I'm doing this. I believe it's very important that we use every social media aspect and be part of our community in every way we can, be our face out there, be at community events, and be that voice for the members of the city. I appreciate your time this evening, and while you consider me for the vacant city council position. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm really looking forward to this evening where we can present my views on what's happening with Issaquah, introduce myself. But I want to say I'm absolutely in awe with our four candidates that have gone before me, so I'm batting clean up here and hope I have a few different things to say or to add. Again, my name is Michelle Kemper. I live at 986 Northeast High Street, right here in the Highlands. So who am I? My husband and I moved to Issaquah back in 2003. We were looking for a small-town lifestyle, having come from the Midwest. My husband actually came from the Midwest, I'm a city gal from California. But he ruled we were going to find a small-town lifestyle to move to, something that had small businesses and the ambiance of the Midwest. Issaquah was it. When we came here and saw the small businesses on Front Street in Gilman Village, I was in love right away. I loved the unique setting of the mountains, and as soon as we got here, I heard them referred to as the Issaquah Alps, how appropriate. The open spaces, and for me, the easy access to the freeway so I could get to work in Seattle and Bellevue was very important. Talis is where we put our first home. In fact, back in 2003, we were one of the first homes that was built in Talis. We were in a little subdivision called Triaris. The entire hillside was nothing but trees. The apartment complex was there, and other than that, there was nothing. Charlie Connor had a model home, we went to that model and immediately bought our lot. That house was built in 2003 with the understanding of a great planned development that promised me three things: retail, commercial, and homes. Well, it was kind of a swing and a miss on the retail, but we did get the home. And in fact, our home was so lovely and the community was so wonderful that we actually bought our second home in Talis once it had been built out. That was great for us, but retirement was looming, and we decided to retire and wanted a different lifestyle. This time, I ruled it was no longer the suburb, I wanted city living. We looked no further than the Highlands. We now live directly north of the Regal Theater, within walking distance, so we are truly living the work, live, play with no transportation. I can walk to the Transit Center and easy access wherever I need to go. We've lived firsthand the growth in Issaquah. When we moved here in 2003, I could make a left turn from Talis on the State Route 900 without a light at that intersection. I could drive to the QFC and park right in front of the grocery store without circling for five minutes, waiting for someone to leave Starbucks so I could find a place to park. I could go down to Front Street, park right on the street in front of Fisher Meats, walk in, and they knew my order before I got to the counter. I could go to small businesses like Bones Chocolate, who every year has generously donated to whatever nonprofit activity I was involved in. I've gone to large employers here in Issaquah, such as Costco, when Jeff Brotman was the campaign chair for King County United Way. Small business owners and large have contributed to our community. I served on the Chamber of Commerce Tourism Committee. I also served with Talis HOA. I served on the HOA with the Communications Committee. I was the editor for the monthly newsletter and volunteered, actually, I was volunteered, to lead a web development group and working with a local community business here called Outsource Marketing to create a website for our community. After a 37-year career, I retired from Smetra Financial Services as Vice President and Chief Compliance Officer. Now, Chief Compliance Officer is a unique title that is germane to the financial services industry. It means that I led teams at both state and federal level with regulators to do financial product design and compliance for consumer protection. I spent many hours on airplanes back and forth to Washington DC and New York financial centers, getting ready for meetings with elected officials. My personal time on the airplane meant I had a briefcase with a stack of yellow highlight pens going through reams of financial and legal documentation, so I'm well acquainted with the prep that is required to attend a meeting where a decision needs to be made. It also required team leadership skills. In 1993, before some of you were even born, in 1993, I was the first female vice president for Safeco Life Insurance Company. Two years after that, I was elected to two back-to-back terms as chairman of a large trade association for legal professionals, which was rather unusual because I am not an attorney. I worked productively with Olympia State Department of Insurance on regional as well as state issues. So why Issaquah? Back in 2003, our population was about 18,000, and the median house price was around 250,000. Today, according to real estate websites, our median house price is 850,000, and our population has more than doubled. These compelling statistics are an undercurrent to every issue that we have in this city as both an issue and as an opportunity. City leaders that preceded you on council worked to create future-oriented plans aimed at keeping our small-town attributes in place while affording sensible and sustained growth. Your efforts have crystallized that into a vision plan, and I'm extremely pleased to see that the strategic opportunities that you've identified in the work groups that you're working on to pare down our 88 priority items down to some workable items that will make it into a five-year attainable business plan. I'm anxious to roll my sleeves up and work on those in some fashion. Of those 88 items, which I read every single one with my highlight pen, I can single about three priorities that I would really find passionate with the strategic plan. First is mobility. Getting around town for our local residents is an issue, but it's compounded with the complexity of the growing volume of pass-through drivers. Projects such as the traffic calming in Old Town, the roundabout in front of Target, that pass-through under I-90, these are all recent examples of improvements that we've made to handle our growing traffic. But it points out that we need innovation that is both locally controlled and regionally controlled. I don't see these as mutually exclusive, I see them as something that can be handled concurrently. Second, growth and development. Proactive management to adhere to the vision plan so that we seek development opportunities in the valley. Development opportunities that are robust for business, support services, affording house, affordable housing, and true work-live opportunities with access to mass transit. The work-live opportunity in Talis with access to mass transit actually works. You can get down the hill, I can't get back up. As a businessperson, I see jobs and city budgeting as key to the growth component for Issaquah, so that is my number three. I also see as a resident that we need to retain the charm for Issaquah, and I believe that retaining the charm and growth development are not mutually exclusive. They can be managed together with good leadership. Last on my list is actually my most important one, and that's city leadership and services. Accountability and clarity in communications is vital. I commend you on the council, and I commend our mayor for your frequent communications and your accessibility. I feel actually that I know you all because I watch you on Channel 21 on TV. But your accessibility, not just with your communication that way, but your accessibility to meet with the constituents is very important. The city website is useful if you have persistency and proactively try and drill down for information. I would like to say I'm an expert on the website, but it fools me every now and then. My biggest loss was our local newspaper. I think we need, as a council and as a city, to explore other ways to be communicating with our constituents, whether it's social platforms or face-to-face. So what would I bring to the council? I outlined a few points that I'm passionate about from the strategic plan, but I would be leading a whole lot, lending a whole lot more in support. I would show up for meetings prepared. I've served on many boards of directors. For example, I currently serve on the Issaquah Village Development Committee. Boards that I've served on include Tiny Footprints, Associated with Children's Hospital for preterm and stillbirth research, Swedish Hospital NICU Parent Advisory Board, where we partnered with March of Dimes for support services for families of preterm babies, Starlight Foundation for helping sick kids in the hospital, Junior Achievement, where I taught Intro to Business for kids at at-risk schools here in Puget Sound. That was probably my biggest learning experience. Campfire Boys and Girls for Youth Leadership and Development, and King County Library Systems Foundation for Literacy. I would also bring the skill of approachability, able to put others at ease, listen to others' opinions, and be able to actively recite back what they have said, whether I agree with them or not. And as a retired person, I bring one more thing, I bring the gift of time. I have the time with fewer competing demands on myself. I have never, ever aspired to an elected office prior to November of 2016.
Thirty seconds remaining.
That changed my life. I've jumped in the deep end of the pool. I am involved, I am invested, this is my community. Today, I want to be able to serve, whether it's serving on the council or serving in other ways with our community. You've heard from four others and myself, you've got a hard decision to make, and whoever you pick, I will proactively support all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again to all five applicants this evening. And at this point, we are going to recess into executive session to discuss qualifications of the applicants per RCW 42.30.110-NI-NH. This item is expected to take approximately 30 minutes. Please note, executive sessions are closed to the public. We are going to adjourn upstairs, and then we'll be back. Thank you.[1226.97]
Thank you.
I'm from one of the fine pizza establishments here in the city.
And we are back from executive session. So, did somebody -- how best to proceed?
That's my name. So we have five applicants and one of the -- I guess it would be my preference that we have all five applicants continue and continue on with the process and that we don't narrow the field at all or do anything that would reduce the field. We have a couple of more events and that way we have an opportunity to learn more about all the applicants in the next couple of weeks.
Anybody -- any concerns, thoughts on that? Councilmember Winterstein?
I would agree. I look forward to the opportunity to interact with all of you in the next forum that we have scheduled and thank you for applying and taking this stage and look forward to continuing the process. That's my preference.
Also Deputy President Baptiste?
I would agree. I would really enjoy the opportunity to continue to learn. I think we've got a great group of applicants and looking forward to continuing with our next events.
Councilmember Ray?
So I concur with that. I'm very impressed with the entire field and I am looking forward to our next event but I would also encourage those of you that I have not had a chance to talk to one-on-one to please reach out to me. I'd love to schedule some time with you to chat.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you all so much for coming forward and for presenting this evening and I am in agreement that I would also like to learn more about all of your visions for Issaquah.
I think that sounds like a great plan. I will mention that you should feel free if you've already talked to us, you're welcome to talk to us again between now and the next meeting. I will also mention to any members of the public if they wish to provide feedback on what they've heard tonight, we'd be interested to get their feedback as well and unless there's anything else, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.